We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a pledge of the flag. Your right. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. And I say so very proudly. And to the people of the village who stand one nation under God, in the name of the Lord. The lettering of justice for our all.
Good, I have a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2025.
Moved.
Second.
Any conditions, deletions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
And we will move on to a special presentation after I apologize for being late. Because in a meeting behind that door. Move on to Mary Ann Williams and Melanie Randolph.
Go ahead.
Okay. I've heard before, I'm Melanie Randolph, I'm going to be the president of the Chamber of Commerce, voted in November. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I love Beville, and I know you guys do too, and I think we'll do great things together. So I'm looking forward to getting to know, and I'm Bruce's best friend, so, you know. We have the Big Chill coming up, have you guys all been to the Big Chill?
Aye.
Okay, we have it coming up, mark your calendars now, there's going to be no excuse because you have time. January 31st, we're hoping to have that day. So if you guys could let us know if we could have that day, that would be great. People like to drink there, so we'd like to waive the open container fee also if we could. And I would like to request, can we waive the fee for Mercer Park? I believe it was, we were paying half at $25, can we waive the $25?
It's a $30 fee.
Oh, yeah. Thirty is half?
Yeah. Thirty is the fee, so it would be fifteen.
Oh, do you think we might be able to waive that $15?
We can waive 40% of what you thought was.
That's good, I like that light. Are you, are you the treasurer?
No, but I am, and I don't want them to make this hard. So like, no math, no 40%.
But Melanie, I do want to point out, there's still the cost end of it.
No, we still have fees associated with, we get a bill.
Yes.
We just, but on top of that.
We're not leaving the electric bill that costs.
No, 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 on top of that bill.
Rental fee.
Yeah, we have this little rental fee and stuff, and it's so small, can we just waive that rental fee? We still will get the other, in fact, we want to, you know, Taren helps us with all the other stuff, and explains it and all that, and we appreciate him. And we're planning on, you know, not cutting town or anything. We'll pay our bills, don't you worry, bestie. So just those three little things.
Do we have to act on that?
It has to be a motion.
But is it something we have to act on, now?
Right now? No, you don't have to act on it right now.
Do you need to know now if it's going to cost you $15 or $30?
It'd be nice.
It'd be nice, but it's more important that we know that that day is reserved for us at Mercer Park, so we can start with our planning process.
So briefly, just so everyone understands completely. That is, generates a lot of money. Tell us where it goes, so people understand when and if we do waive these fees, that it's for a good reason.
Okay, so the Big Chill, people jumped in the lake and they put teams together. Or the river.
River, lake.
It's water, and it's cold. It's cold, it's cold water. They jump in cold water, okay, from Mercer Park. And they get sponsors and they put teams together. For instance, when we had the horrible tragedy with Ava, there was an Ava team put together. They do put teams together to draw attention to a local charity that's close to their heart. We then give money back to each of the top three.
Three.
Top three local charities. They each get a certain amount of money, and then some of the monies goes back into...
Well, we have to pay the bills.
We pay the bills, and then we, and then we do this with Rotary. We do this with Rotary, our Rotary friends, because we're really into building teamwork with everybody. And we then split all of those profits, which isn't a huge amount after we've given the money away and paid the bills. And then Rotary, you know, puts it into things like the backpack program and things like that, I believe. I don't want to necessarily speak for Rotary, but they do a lot of good things within the community. And then we put it back into the chamber, and the only thing we do for the chamber that really isn't putting back into the community, which I think it is putting into the community, is we pay Mary Ann. She's the only person we pay, I volunteer my time and the whole board does, we do not get paid for anything. So really, all of our monies go back into the community too. And I can't tell you specifically where they go, but you're welcome to look at our, you know, sit down with me sometime, and I could, but it's kind of boring. But we do give the three top charities, and then half goes to Rotary, which they're really known for backpack programs, so it's all going back into the community.
I'm going to make a motion to waive the fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Oh, you guys are the best, I'm going to have to get a new best friend besides Bruce.
And we need the open container waived.
Yep. Do we, I'm looking, Mike who's busy, do we do that before we have insurance and stuff in place?
We already have all of that turned in.
They have many things been approved.
This has never been an issue in great event. Wonderful for a command.
What's the hours for the open container?
Ten.
Eleven thirty to about three. Because we'll be setting up, starting like at nine, and then we tear down, but the actual time that people will be going in is, I mean, about eleven thirty. And we're going to start.
Yeah, they're usually done by between 11:30 and, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, that's much enough, yeah.
Sure, my heart.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
And the open containers of drinking will be coming from a local Baldensville person, so, community.
And won't be leaving the grounds of Mercer Park.
Do you want to add that to the motion that you guys already have?
He's going to make a second.
Okay, let's vote on the first one. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good job.
I'll make a motion to waive, or have the open container in place for, from 11:00 to 4:00. I'm going to waive the open container from 11:00 to 4:00 at Mercer Park for the Big Chill.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No, buddy, we're at 9:00 AM then.
All I can think of is Joseph or Joe, I'm not sure what you like to be called, standing there waving an open container, I'm looking forward to seeing it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I did the Big Chill twice, so.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last thing's the date. The 31st.
Yes.
If you put in your...
The 31st, oh, you don't have to vote on that?
No.
She tells us if it's available.
Okay, thanks so much.
She would have told you if it wasn't available, so.
Great way to end January, the longest month of the year.
Exactly.
Okay, are there any system comments on the agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to trustees' comments. And because Nate's on the end for the first time in years. Going to go with you.
All right, I just want to remind everybody to go out and vote. I think this is the last meeting before the election, so go out and vote. And also, just when you're outside at nighttime, please wear like some sort of reflective clothing when you're walking. Just, just please, because it is getting tougher and tougher to see some people who, like with this safe, you know, slow down, look around, and everything that we're doing. If we could just make sure that the pedestrians are doing their part as well, that'd be nice. So with that, sticking to your job.
Thank you.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay.
I'm going to add on to pedestrian safety with Nate, and remind people that your yard waste should not be in the street. It should be on your yard, so that if a pedestrian has to go out and around a big huge pile of leaves, the person driving the car coming up the road may or may not see them. So keep your yard waste on the yard. And our DPW crews are coming every week to pick it up. So I think that also helps a lot in pedestrian safety, especially around Halloween when there's little kids darting in and out everywhere as well, so.
Just to add to that. Baldwin Hill right now is, might as well be single lane traffic. And I've seen some of the stuff on our community page where people are upset with the road getting scratched up from picking up the leaves. There's an easy way to fix that, don't put them in the road, because they're not supposed to be in the road. So if we want to keep our streets not scratched up because of the way that leaves get picked up, put them where they belong. Were you done with the session?
Yeah.
And then a brief executive session for contractual matter.
Okay.
Going to give Joe a chance to...
No, I'm going to put item H down.
Sorry.
Then we'll give Joe a chance.
I thought you were moving right on.
No.
I just wanted to say, be careful on Halloween, look out for kids. If you have children going out for trick or treating, make sure they have reflective stuff on their costumes. They may not think it's cool, but it won't be very cool if they're not around to celebrate next year. So please be careful out there on Halloween. Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on that too, can't shut my mouth on it. The least of it is window painting, so we're going to have a lot of kids in the village, so mind that as well. And we're going to have the afternoon trick or treating in the village too, which I did last year for the first time, and it was amazing. And I wouldn't have thought it was as big of a deal as it was after having seen it. There's a lot of kids. So be mindful that Saturdays are going to be almost a full day of a lot of children in the village.
Would you dress up as?
The fat guy.
How much candy are you getting?
As much as my granddaughter would give you.
And it'll be dark on Halloween by the time trick or treating starts. So you'll see, it's already almost dark out now, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Are we done?
We're done.
I'm going to move on with this theme of safety. This is called my mayor's education session. I am a big fan of the crossing lights that we, the state, put in for us. However, I need people to understand, both the drivers and the pedestrians, that just because you push the button and the light flashes, doesn't mean you stroll into the street. Drivers, a flashing yellow light generally means caution. You need to slow down and look and see why that light is flashing. I'm amazed at some vehicles that don't even slow down when the lights are going. I push them twice a day where I am, but it's interesting to see that. And as this trustee has pointed out, they don't necessarily give you five hours to go across the street. If it's clear, watching for traffic, you need to go and get out of the street, because it's still a street. I also wanted, I think it was mentioned last week, but I had to last night and again today because there was an email problem, share a photo of the village entrance sign on the east, at Point Park, on the east part of our village. And I want to give kudos to the Women's Garden Club who goes beyond what expectations with... Now, if you haven't been there, there's scarecrows and all kinds of creatures in the garden. Just, they really make Baldensville, coming in from that direction, stand out and wish we had them in every direction. Not sure who would take care of all of them. The last thing I want to do is, once again, piggyback on trustee Collins about Election Day. It's November 4th. This is the first November election, so I wanted to talk to you about the polling places, not here. Okay, it's your regular polling places in the village, I think, Canton Woods, the Methodist Church.
Library.
Where?
Library.
Okay, at the library, see, I go to the Methodist Church, I don't know any other polling places. But it's the regular polling place, so you need to go to that. If you want to do early voting, it's at Town Lysander when that begins. I also wanted to ask you to read the ballots carefully. This is the first time we have a ballot that's not just set up for a village election. So I'm going to use Paul and Joe as examples, they're running for trustee. You need to look down the ballot till you find their name. The top line is a major party, and it's also going to have town councilmen, town judges, various things up there. I would recommend, as village residents, that we drop down to the bottom where there are two independent parties that have all the candidates, and look there. I would also recommend everybody get to know the candidates, take a chance and chat with them. You know, it's not so much what party they're associated with, but who they are. Same with the judges. Every, there's four fine individuals running for office, it isn't a matter of, ooh, stay away from that one. But please look at the ballot carefully, it's a little different than anything we've dealt with in the village before. Other than that, oh, I just wanted to point out, frustratingly, I'm working with the state on a grant for the Little League, which seems like playing croquet, one wicked after another. But just wanted everybody to know that we're working on that. And hope they're looking to get lights for another field so that they can bring a higher level, a Little League tournament, just short of the World Series, up to Baldensville. So hopefully we can get that together. Other than that, I think I'm done, I'll move on to our department heads. And without our attorney, we'll go right to village clerk.
Hello, so the last meeting the mayor asked about, when we're doing the email changeover to the .gov. I talked to John Harke this week, and I sent an email to all the department heads today. We are going to be, John's going to be doing that the weekend of November 8th. So nobody can go on their email that weekend. He physically has to get into everybody's computer and do a changeover. He's not sure if the calendar is going to roll over, so if there's anything on your calendars, he's not sure if it's going to roll over. I don't know about those that access their emails, you know, online, not through the system. But any questions, John will be available that Monday to help everybody in the transition. If anybody emails after that Monday to the .org, it will automatically bounce over to the .gov for a couple of months, so we're not going to lose any emails. So if anybody has any questions, reach out to John. Or if you don't have his contact information, just let me know, and I'll get you in contact with him. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Jody, are you the keeper of the official hours for village trick or treating that you can share?
I know it's six to eight, it's been six to eight in the past, so it's six to eight.
Just wanted to, on record, we talked about Halloween, but I just wanted it on record that it's six to eight in the village.
And I think if you're not going to be home or whatever.
Keep your light off.
Keep the light off the front. The light, your front porch light indicates that you welcome trick or treaters. If you don't, keep your light off. Moving on to our treasurer.
Okay, a couple things. The first new business item on your agenda is the bond anticipation note that we're going to ask you to approve tonight. The description there says that it also refinances that bucket truck. The bank does not want to do that. And I've gone back and forth with them for a couple days, and they don't want to do it. So they're not going to do it. So I would tell you that the amount is correct, it's there, but the description should not include refinancing that bucket truck. And we may turn around and do something different with that. The instrument that is on that other vehicle after we get this one taken care of, because they initially told me that they were going to do it. And they've changed their mind. And the reason is, I'm sure, that it's a much, it's a higher rate, and they don't want to lose that. You know, they don't want to refinance their own debt down.
So we're bonding for enough...
You're bonding for the new truck that's going to the DPW, plus three police vehicles? Or two police vehicles, or three?
That's what we're bonding for, but the amount?
That amount of $533,000 is correct amount.
To cover those, or it would be enough to pay off?
No, we would, we would do something different. I haven't figured out what yet, but it might be like just turn around and refinance that instrument to a lower rate. I mean, it's, it's, I'm surprised that they won't do it. But surprised, not surprised.
Okay.
So. The second thing is, there's budget modifications for you on the agenda. Any questions can ask when we get to that point. And the third thing is that the repayment to the US Treasury of the $512 remaining ARPA funds is on there also. So I just want to make you fully aware of that. Again, $512. I'm very happy with how we managed that and how close we came to zero.
Can you remind everyone what the original?
$802,000 or something like that, yeah. So, and it gets complicated managing the finances of a couple of projects as we came down to the end of that. And a couple of expenses that came in less than what we thought they would. And so, and then there's not time to authorize the expense of that kind of found money in a legitimate way. And the Treasury had told everybody, don't short circuit the process because we will, we're going to check for that. So we did not, it wasn't worth $500. That's it.
Any questions for the treasurer? Senior center coordinator is not with us this evening, so we'll move over to Taren with the DPW.
Just real quick, it is fall, so we, crews will be around every week picking up yardways and brush. Just ask that you do leave it on your yard, we'll take it from there. And we, again, we will be around every, every week. It may, we may start on a Monday, or it may start on a Wednesday, it's weather dependent. That is work that we do like to do when it's raining, because it is all mechanical type work, and we are wrapping up projects from this year. So if you don't see us out on a Monday, we'll be out on a Wednesday, but we will be out. That's all I have.
How long to take to do the whole village?
Depending on how, how much is out there, it's two to three days.
Any other questions for Taren?
Thank you. Great job.
You're up, chief.
Thank you, mayor. I have three items on the agenda, they're all appointments. I just, before we get to them, and I'll comment on each person as you, as you put them forth for a vote. But I'd like to really commend Lieutenant Lockwood and Sergeant Jason Gwynn for their yeoman's work on interviews and backgrounds for us to get some very, very solid candidates. One person's a transfer, which I'll talk about, comes from the sheriff's office. And then two people will be starting a police academy at the end of this month. But they have done an outstanding job of interviewing, doing backgrounds. Not every candidate successfully completed the background that we looked at to ensure that the people that we're going to bring on board, as former trustee Rick Presley used to say, not lower the standard. And I feel very confident that the individuals that are in front of your, this board tonight will represent this village and the organization in a strong manner. There's no guarantee about the people once we send them to the academy, as we talked about in our public safety meeting, so they're put into that type of environment. But we feel they're all solid candidates. But without the work of Sergeant Jason Gwynn and Lieutenant Mike Lockwood, we wouldn't have them in this position. So I just really want to commend the effort that they've put forth to ensure that we've got people for this board to vote upon.
Had a meeting with mayors last night. Mayor of another village pointed out, I shared this information, that they had planned on hiring, she had just been informed that afternoon by their chief that their candidate, suddenly the background checked in, meet the mustard for their...
Yeah, no, I, we had a county chief's meeting today. I had mentioned in public safety, one of the chiefs sought me out afterwards. I talked to him for about a half an hour. One of his candidates did not successfully complete the psychological exam. There's another department, which we'll nameless, that hired an individual that we chose not to for our own reasons, and I was actually in on that interview. So again, we really, I think, once I talk about each of these individuals, they're not here tonight, and I'll explain the reasons why for each of them as well as we get to them. They will be at the next meeting. But our philosophy was, we're hoping we can get the right people, but if not, we'll have to wait. Because that's, we're not going to hire someone and take on what potentially could be a 20-year, I don't want to say burden, but certainly, you know, issue or, you know, liability to ensure that for a short-term fix for a long-term issue.
Hoping that all these are successful, and short of county noses, how are we getting in terms of staffing level?
This will bring us to full staff.
Okay.
This will bring us to full staff. And we have Connor Williams, who graduates from the police academy tomorrow at 10:00. It's our authority. So he successfully completed the Syracuse Police Academy, which is a rigorous training program, and he'll start our field training program and move go from there. So this will bring us to full staff.
The last question I have, which I had hoped to do privately before the meeting, before I read the motion, can you tell me how to pronounce Brian's last name?
Glauberman.
Glauber, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Last two questions, that's all I have, mayor. Thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on then to pending business regarding trailway signage project.
In the DPW committee, Taren and I, we discussed a request for an RFP to go out and purchase the like signage. The signs that look like the ones that are already, that are already there that say, like either the dock, or this trail is not truck accessible, or things like that. It's the green signs that are right out there already. We're just going to get bigger signs and have the village logo on the top as opposed to what I, it looks like it's like the New Orleans Saints football logo that's up on the top right now.
Florida lead.
Florida lead, yeah, so. Yeah, we just have like the Village of Baldensville crest or whatever on the top, and then I'm going to forward to Taren the new, the new trail names that I think everybody is comfortable having in all five trailways and everything. And we'll just get the RFP going and start purchasing them and get them in place.
Can you let me know what those names are too?
You're the one that put the thing together.
Okay, but some of the trails I had multiple options.
Yeah, no, I think it was, yeah, I'll let you guys know, but that's the, that's the gist of it. We just got to get it purchased and get them in place, and that'll be the first of a couple of steps before we get, get these trailways really, you know, really fine tuned and, you know, informative to the public and all that, so. You know, we're on the right track.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any concerns, questions? Okay. If you look at the thing with the names in it, and it bothers you, say so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to vote down Nick Towns' trail.
Okay.
Sure.
Moving on to new business. I have a motion for a bond anticipation note pertaining to the village bonding in an amount not to exceed $533,000 for the purchase of three SUVs for use as police, Baldensville police vehicles, one Freightliner 10-wheel truck for DPW.
Moved. Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, for the public's sake, the reason there's no comments and questions, we've been beating this around the bush for quite a while.
The 10-wheelers showing up when, next week?
It'll be in Syracuse at Tracy Roads next week, and it'll be delivered the week after to us.
And the police vehicles were requested last November. Took us a while to say yes.
They said yes, chief, I mean.
I'm very happy.
At the end of the day, we said yes.
Our staff is happy, I'm happy, yes.
Full staff.
Big, big approval, so thank you.
Item B, motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, November 6th, 2025, at 6:00 PM regarding the update to the nuisance sighting code, signage code.
Second.
Discussion.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, the village clerk received no comments from any of the board, so I assume all the language was good. I will be giving her my comments, Kevin, because I don't agree with all the language.
I know, there were a couple that you had, and I incorporated them.
Okay.
Has that been shared with the code enforcement office yet, for him to comment too?
I tried to find it today, I just found the property management that we passed and sent that to him, because he didn't have it. But the codes officer has not seen the proposed law. And I forgot, I got, going through emails, I was going to send it to him, and I got sidetracked.
Why had sidebar with him before the meeting, he was still in here working, and he didn't have a clue, so?
No, he didn't. Well, he had a clue, but he hadn't seen the document. So if, between Kevin, Jody, and myself, maybe we can get him a copy, or three? So if, between Kevin, Jody and myself, maybe we can get him a copy or three?
I can send him, I've got the updated versions.
Okay. Thank you. We do appreciate the work you put into it, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item C. Now, did we set the, did we vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item C, a motion to authorize a JCAP, and I can't tell you what that stands for, application for the village court in the 2025-2026 grant cycle for up to $2,246.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think JCAP is Justice Court Assistance Program, I think.
That's what I'm digging, digging for right now, it's down there. Her grant applications to improve courtroom security, that's what it's about. Okay, any, did we get a motion?
Yeah.
Did we have a discussion other than?
That was a discussion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Justice Court Assistance Program grant application. Item D, motion to appoint Tyler J. White as a full-time police officer effective November 1st, 2025 at a salary rate of $89,120 per year.
Well, that's okay.
Discussion? I'll do then what the chief might want to add. It says, did you want to comment on?
Yes, I would like to if I could. Tyler's transferred from the sheriff's office, he's got about four years of experience there, he's a Lyssana resident, trustee Cole was very happy to hear, he's a US Army veteran, also has a master's degree from Niagara University, so he'll be starting with us in a modified field training program just to get him up to speed on some of our policies and procedures. He's worked in the Lyssana-Van Buren area, so he's familiar with our staff and our people, which quite frankly is the reason why he's joining our organization. He's giving up that time in the retirement system to come with us, he'll have to do 20 years here in our retirement system before he could, he could retire out, but we're very, very pleased to have him join the department, and he'll be, you know, on patrol, solo patrol, I would expect by, by January 1st.
Excellent. I was looking at budget and noticed, I don't believe anybody has utilized the tuition thing with these new officers coming out.
No, Joe Sarah is seeking a PhD.
He's doing it now?
Yeah, Joe Sarah's seeking a PhD.
Okay.
So he'll.
Because I was just saying, please make the new officers know that that's out there.
Absolutely, no, they, they, they all have a copy of the contract and, but Officer Sarah is working with Liberty University on, on a PhD, and he's getting an A in every single class.
Nice. Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Moving on to item E, motion to appoint Brian T. Glouberman as full-time police officer effective October 27th, 2025 at a salary rate of $65,446 per year pending the successful completion of a background investigation.
Moved.
Second.
Yeah, Brian comes to us, lifelong Liverpool resident, he has a bachelor's degree from Puka College, and his father's retired police officer with the Syracuse Police Department, so he comes from a law enforcement family, and are looking forward to him joining the organization, he'll be attending the police academy that starts October 27th with the Syracuse Police Department. So we have two spots in that academy for Brian and Jacob, and provided the board votes yes on both of them, and they'll be, they'll be starting there then.
Any questions for the chief? All in favor?
Aye.
I carry a question that's not specific to this person. At what point can you use people like that that are technically employed by the village for helping with the parades and road, you know?
They really have to be under the direct supervision of one of our officers, so it's not like we can put them out there solo, because they're going to be in uniform, and we're expecting them to act in a manner that a, a, a seasoned officer would be, so the answer to that is not till they're out of the academy and the field training program. During field training, we can have them out there, but they're going to be, you know, when we had the, the gathering at the Four Corners here, and if you want to call it protest or whatever, we want to refer to it as, Officer Stevenson, who was in field training, was stationed there, but she was under the direct supervision of her field training officer, plus I was there, lieutenant was there and things, and never out of sight from anyone, so it's not like we can put them out posted and expect them just to control traffic and deal with an irate citizen who didn't want to follow the rules and things, we couldn't, couldn't expose them to that type of environment because they haven't been trained for it.
I was just wondering about the other green lights and stuff.
Tyler White may be able to help in a limited capacity.
Absolutely. Much different scenario there.
Okay. We did that one. Item F, motion to appoint Jacob A. Mueller as a full-time police officer effective October 27th, 2025 at a salary rate of $65,446 per year pending the successful completion of a background investigation.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
He's come to us, lifelong resident from Camillus, just finishing up at SUNY Cortland with a degree in education, so I think we've got three highly educated, solid people to, to bring into our organization, and, which is, which is great.
The Cortland alone, I'll add some caution there.
Well, we all, we all have our costs, as it appears.
Do we have a motion? We do? All in favor? Okay, great.
Thank you.
I didn't expect this, when I saw the agenda, appointing three officers, I'm like, whoa.
Well, we got a lot done. We've been busy, we've been busy.
Okay, that brings us to executive session, except I'm going to move to.
No.
Budget. Ah, the budget. Item G, motion to approve budget modifications as proposed in the document 2025-10-16 Budget Modifications for 2025-2026 Budget.
Motion.
PDF.
I was going to say, he's still bad at it for how long the, the title is.
Any questions for our treasurer on this budget modifications? Okay. Sometime put a wrinkle in there, would you?
I, I do want to point out to you one of them that I, yeah, the first one that's for the utilities for this building, I think we talked about this at the beginning of the fiscal year, National Grid had a lot of problems, I shouldn't say that, our local public utility had a lot of problems, can you edit that? Had a lot of problems with their billing system from the summer, last summer, the 20, in '24, all the way through the new year, and we weren't receiving bills, and then we're receiving bills that were wrong, and it got really out of control, it took some time and they were able to fix it, but we looked at bills that we thought were correct to create the budget for this year, and, and that was a mistake on our part, you know, I'll take responsibility for that. So the budget is low for this building, so we'll, we'll have to.
Turn the heat down.
Coming into the end of the year, we're going to have to probably modify it, you know, it's a double whammy, it's, it's already light right now, and we're coming into a high expense time of year, so.
Next meeting, we'll just have these lights on. And I think backstage or whatever, it'll be dark.
Everybody come in your winter coats for the November, December meetings.
I mean, it's, it's absolutely doable in the scheme of the whole budget, but it just, I just wanted you to know, you may see that one on there tomorrow.
What should vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried, but I would also request everybody to review the, the budget information you sent that I looked at, everybody got it right.
Yeah.
Go over those things where we have item areas that, as the treasurer pointed out, are healthy, and areas that we need to look at carefully for the rest of the fiscal year. And I do have a comment on that that I will privately share with you.
Did we talk at the last meeting about needing to start looking at when we are going to have budget sessions?
Were you here?
Yeah. Did we, I remember the discussion, but I don't remember if we decided anything.
I have to figure out a calendar.
I haven't sent the exact date out.
Okay, okay.
I haven't sent you the exact date yet.
Okay.
But department units have to have all their work done before Thanksgiving.
All right.
Right? Because we don't have a lot of time after that, so that'd be really late. Okay, rather than go into the executive session, I'd like to do the public comments first, if that's okay? Okay, does anybody want to, wish to address the board at this time? If so, please come to the mic, state your name and your, either your address or your, who you're representing, whatever case it may be.
Sally, you're still in shorts. It's work. I keep my house at 61. Oh, my Lord. So I believe if like if it's winter, you wear winter things, but it's warmer elsewhere, so.
Okay.
You know. And when the wind blows in the right direction, my room can be 55 degrees in the winter. But don't use your CPAP with the humidifier because you'll drown if you do, if it's 55.
Okay, I assume that's something you came here to talk about, Sally.
Yep, just sorry, just a little, you know, caution, if, don't use your CPAP with the humidifier, it's really cold. So I don't know if you know, but lantern flies have been seen, spotted lantern flies have been seen in Onadoga County. They're invasive, they're bad.
I know what they are, yes.
Yeah, so one of the remedies is to grow milkweed. Apparently spotted lantern flies love to eat it, but it's toxic to them, and so it will kill them, but without affecting anything else, so. Hey, milkweed.
Also stepping on them.
Please. I'll be brief, I promise.
Jason Santiago, I live right here down the road to 59 West Tennessee Street, just feedback to the trustees and everybody in the room, the last two events that were at the island, I thought were excellent, Taste of Baldonsville in September and the recent bicentennial, I was there for the Taste of Baldonsville multiple times, around 12 o'clock, and then also again around 7 o'clock. I don't know what everybody else's feedback was and who attended, but I just thought everything was handled well, everything, everybody seemed respectful, big shout out to the police force, because I was standing on the corner and I just saw a lot of the interaction by the police officers with the people they were crossing, and they were excellent, so again, just want to give that positive feedback, but more importantly, I know the last time I was here in August, I talked about just utilizing that island a little bit more, I know that there's probably other issues that you got to consider, but I do think it just brings to the attention of everybody, not just in our community, but outside the community, about this great village that we have, and I'm sure that a lot of our local business owners appreciate having people from outside come into our great village, because I think on that day, both the bicentennial and Taste of Baldonsville, I think our businesses did pretty well from what it seemed like, so just food for thought, for consideration in the future for other events, because we have a gold mine here in our village, so that's my comment.
That was important for those events also, and they were both excellent. Of course, it always helps when you have excellent weather.
Yep.
I don't know who ordered the weather out for both those days, but boy, it was beautiful. I also wanted to point out that in the meeting behind the closed door, the public works meeting, our superintendent's working on an RFP for promoters for the island for the upcoming season, so it's certainly within our plans that we have things, who knows what follows, but we're attempting, but thank you for your input.
Thank you.
He might be my new best friend. I'm just saying.
I'm crushed.
I just wanted to say thank you when you brought up the trick-or-treating that you guys all, you know, you're, you guys participated last year in the village, and that was great, and you're doing it again, and we just really appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. It's a great time.
I have to apologize in advance because I signed us up and I'm not going to be here, but Ruth and our, and our senior center coordinator will both be, yes, be out here on the.
We have either, either.
Any businesses and organizations signed up right now?
Great.
We'll have fun with that.
Forty.
It's okay, Ms. Megan, because Ms. Megan, I won't do this year either.
Twice this year.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Not, but I have a motion to move into executive session.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. I want to thank all of you for coming out this evening, and thank you for your input.